I think it's time we call our meeting to order. Thank you everyone for coming this evening. At this time, I'll offer an invocation, then immediately following, we have a pledge of allegiance. Our most gracious heavenly Father, we give you the praise and the honor for the grace and the mercy that you have so generously bestowed upon us throughout this day. Sinners that we may be, you continue to forgive us and you will never abandon us. May we continue to be dedicated to pray for those who struggle from day to day just to remain alive, only to face hardship in the days to come. May the lives of the many that have been upended by the recent flooding, may they feel your presence for those we lift them up in prayer. And as we go about the business of this city council tonight, may the words that we say and the actions that we pursue be acceptable to you, our strength and our redeemer. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
... so she would not be... them three, which is the adoption... like to ask the... Have a motion by Councilman Bell, second to his motion by Councilman... Any more discussion? Aye. And it would be approved. Next, I'd have one of our senior Superior Court Judge Brenda Ranch to come forward and the installation to the newly appointed councilman, Councilman Andy Jackson.
Good evening.
Good evening Judge.
Mayor Doughty, Attorney Davis, Manager Trayam, other board members, good afternoon, good evening, and thank you for allowing me to participate in this occasion on this evening. Members, family members and friends, chief, all of you, thank you so much, and especially to Mr. Andy Jackson. We go way back, I told someone, someone earlier, he grew me up. As well as secured his cases along with Andy Bryant, and so I am pleased tonight because I know him as being a fair and thoughtful person. And so I'm excited, and without further ado, I will read your oath, and if you agree that this is something you can do, if you'll just simply say "I do." All right? I'll read it out and you can say "I do." I, Edward Andrew Jackson, do solemnly swear that I will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as council member of the City of Roanoke Rapids on which I am about to enter according to my best skill and ability. So help me God, is that so for you?
Yes, it is. I do.
Thank you. Then congratulations, you are now a member of the City Council for the City of Roanoke Rapids. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
And thank you, Senator Councilman Edward Andrew Jackson. So proud of you.
Thank you.
Thank you, congratulations again.
Thank you Judge.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Come forward and take your seat, sir. It's already warm. To think how fast time goes by, I can remember when I stepped up for the first time, it'd be 15 years ago now, so time goes by pretty fast. Before we move forward, I would just would like to recognize two other of our retired officers, Mr. Jeff Hinton, who's our chief, and Mr. Andy Bryant, believe was the captain. Thank you for coming and supporting Andy Jackson. Glad to have you. No one for unscheduled public comment. Sixth item is the approval of the September 3 regular meeting minutes. Someone like to make a motion to approve them?
I'll make that motion.
All right. Motion by Mr. Jackson, Councilman Jackson, and second by Councilman Bell. Any more discussion on the matter? All in favor, signify by saying aye. If opposed, no. Minutes will be approved as they are presented. Call on the city clerk for a Roanoke Rapids Area Planning Board appointment.
Good evening, Mayor, Council and citizens. Mr. James Herring has submitted a volunteer application for the Roanoke Rapids Area Planning Board, which was enclosed in your packets. Mr. Herring is eligible, and there is currently a vacancy on the board with a term that expires June 1, 2027. City Council took a ballot vote earlier, and Mr. Herring received a unanimous vote to be appointed. Therefore, I respectfully request City Council consider a motion to appoint James Herring to the Roanoke Rapids Area Planning Board.
Hear such a motion?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to appoint James Herring to the Roanoke Rapids Area Planning Board.
Okay, have a motion by Councilman Strickland, second to his motion.
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Stainback, if any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion will be approved, and it'll be appointed to the committee. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Next, I'd call on our police chief, consideration of a temporary closing on the avenue for the Christmas parade. Chief Guyant.
Hey, good evening. Congratulations to you. With all this retired police service here, including myself, you got about 500 years of police service with all these bodies in him, just joking about the 500 years. I bring to you the ordinance for 2024.25. This is the consideration for ordinance declaring a temporary road closure for the Christmas parade. In recent years, the North Carolina Department of Transportation has made changes regarding the closures of state roadways for special events. It is necessary to adopt an ordinance in order to temporarily close Roanoke Avenue, which is also called North Carolina Highway 48, for the Roanoke Rapids Christmas Parade being held on December the 8, 2024. Director Dalton and myself are ready to go with the application and ready to go with the request to DOT for this closure, but before we can proceed any further, we do have to get approval from the council to move forward with this. We would like you to consider a motion to declaring the temporary road closure for the Christmas parade for December the 8, 2024.
Okay, anybody have any questions as police chief? If not, we need a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance 2024.25 declaring a temporary road closure for the Christmas parade on December the 8, 2024.
Okay, the motion is made by Mr. Stainback, second by Councilman Bell. Any more discussion on the matter? If there is none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion will be approved. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Next, Ms. Anderson.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Evening.
Tonight, I bring before you a consideration of a resolution of support for submission of an application for the Rural Transformation Grant. The Rural Transformation Grant Fund provides local governments with grants and expert guidance to improve economic vitality and overcome the unique challenges many rural communities face among four categories. The Rural Community Capacity, RC2 category, is a university-based collaborative that provides educational programming, technical assistance, capacity building, economic development consultation, and focused guidance to local governments and rural and distressed communities. The eligible activities of RC2 include strategic planning and implementation of local projects. This category is designed to assist local units of government in the development of plans that will further the development of public improvements, technology, and infrastructure that will promote economic development. Plans are intended to leverage a community's ability to apply for funding opportunities to implement locally identified projects. A resolution of support is required as a part of the application package, which is due to NC Department of Commerce on October 1, 2024. The current application does not obligate any funding from the city's budget. So if you would see this resolution and consider a motion of support.
May I have a question to... Would this be your department mostly working to use this money?
Yes, sir. So basically, what we intend to do is it's guided towards a strategic plan, and with that strategic plan, it could also help us for other grants and things like that.
Okay. If there's no questions, we need a motion to approve it.
I'll make a motion to consider the motion to adopt Resolution Number 2024.26, operating submission of application to the North Carolina Department of Commerce Rural Transformation Grant.
Okay, the motion is by Councilman Bell, second to his motion.
Second.
Second by Mr. Stainback. Any more discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The motion will be approved. Thank you, ma'am. Item C, I call on the Finance Director, Budget Ordinance.
Good evening. Due to a visit from our auditor recently, we discussed Fund 16, and he feels like that we don't really need a separate fund for this, and that we could have a fund in our regular Fund 10 accounts, and that it would just make bookkeeping easier, we wouldn't have to move money from one fund to another fund. And so I would like you to consider a motion to adopt Budget Ordinance 2024.26, an amount of $62,139.34 to dissolve Fund 16 and move that to Fund 10.
Can I ask some questions?
Yes.
Questions, Mr. Bell?
Under Parks and Recreation Special Program, could you give me just a few different examples of what that would be?
So we don't, the city doesn't give Parks and Rec any program money, so they use all of this money for their summer camps and programs like that. Kelly could probably tell you a few more.
The money that goes into that account is raised by our department, and then you use it to buy free programs, such as the Halloween events and Trump retreat, and any activity that you have down in the recreation center that is free, then that money goes towards that because you do not have a program in local, so you have to raise money for
Any additional questions, Finance Director? Somebody ready to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to adopt Budget Ordinance, Ordinance Number 2024.26, in the amount of $62,139.34 to dissolve Fund 16 and move it to Fund 10.
Okay, the motion is by Councilman Stainback. Do hear second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Strickland. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion will be carried. Thank you, ma'am. Item D would be City Manager, Resolution.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The attached item D, 8D, is consideration of a resolution to amend the interlocal agreement between Halifax County and the City of Roanoke Rapids concerning the collection of ad hoc taxes. The city and the county came to an agreement, maybe in 2011, for the county to collect the taxes that are levied by the city, and in that, in exchange for certain rates. And so as time has evolved, and there have been some proposed amendments to that interlocal agreement for the collection of those taxes, and the amendment is requested for approval by adopting the resolution. There's a letter enclosed that summarizes what the proposed amendments accomplish, kind of restating terms like levying and collecting the taxes, and some of the other provisions in here as well. Subject to any questions, action requested is for approval of Resolution 2024.08.
If no one has any questions, when you're ready, we entertain a motion.
I may consider motion to adopt Resolution Number 2024.08, committing to restating the interlocal agreement with Halifax County section of the area taxes.
Okay, okay, a motion by Councilman Bell, and second by Councilman Jackson. Any more discussion on the matter? There is none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The motion will be approved. Ms. Traynor, I believe you have the next item, also.
Yes, the next agenda item was brought up at the September 3 city council meeting, where the city council reviewed a proposal from the Roanoke Rapids Grade School District's vendor to review a cross-safe school crossing guard services proposal. The proposal and the request by the district is to contribute 50% of the costs for the contract for the school year that we're currently in. The school board last week conducted a special meeting on Tuesday, September 10, and considered the proposal. It was mentioned during that meeting that approximately $51,000 is budgeted for the school year, and the contract costs are approximately 56, and it currently costs approximately $47,000 to hire off-duty police officers. Following a brief discussion, the school board member made a motion to approve the cross-safe agreement or proposal contingent upon agreement by the City of Roanoke Rapids to reimburse the school district for 50% of the total contract cost, and that was seconded and approved by the school board. The city has received a drafted memorandum of understanding from the school district's attorney that would be necessary to enter into if the city council agreed to participate in the cost sharing for the school district's crossing guard services. So tonight, we're just asking you to consider the memorandum of understanding that has been presented in front of you, and that would state a 50% contribution. At this point, even if it is approved, if the council were to approve it, we would have to come back with a budget amendment since these funds are not allocated for the current fiscal year. We have talked about some different alternatives, and among with the police chief and so forth, discussed some different options to the cross-safe proposal, and at this time, we feel like those options should be explored and discussed with the school district prior to any recommendation for the city to participate financially in this agreement. So, subject to your questions, just ask for any discussion or motion from the council concerning the memorandum of understanding that's been presented.
Mayor, can I make a brief comment? Yes, sir. Chief Guyant.
I completely agree with City Manager Traynor. We've been in discussions with the school system, and I want to make sure I caveat this, that the idea that was proposed of going with this school crossing guard services was researched by former Chief Hinton, and he did a great job trying to get this information. He's trying to find a solution to the problem, and I applaud him and I appreciate him for all his efforts that he did this, but I don't really think that this is a really good frugal fiscal thing for the city to get involved in. I think as City Manager Traynor has stated, there are other options that are out there, and she is taking the bull by the horns on this, and she's definitely involved in this process, even as far as the Department of Transportation having two studies going on, one of which has concluded, which is of Belmont Elementary School traffic pickup changes that was produced by the Department of Transportation and approved, and so forward, approved by the school superintendent, but it does have to go before the board for further review. And there's also a current study going on at Challander as well. I just think that we, there's so many more options on the table under City Manager Traynor's leadership on this and taking the bull by the horns on this, that is much more a viable option than to enter into this agreement.
Do anyone on the council have any questions from Chief Guyant? Thank you for the information, chief. And also the city manager, do any of you all have any questions of the city manager on this matter? Okay, well, what would be the pleasure of the council at this time?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to city not participate in the cross-safe school crossing guard service proposal as presented.
crossing guard service proposal as presented.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Strickland, and a second by Councilman Bell. Is there any more discussion on this matter? There being none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If there's no, motion will be approved, that is not to accept the offer that is on the tape. And I guess I should've said this when we were talking about discussion, but I'm gonna say it now unless the city manager tells me, I mean, attorney tells me not to. I totally agree with what city manager said, and we need, and also the police chief, we need to explore all the options that are out there and available. And the city manager and I talked about there needs to be some more communication and conversations between the school district and the city council, and you know, it's a contract thing, so it's probably gonna involve the attorneys sitting down and talking with each other. Because we know at the end of the day, everyone wants to reach an agreement that keeps their students and the adults safe, and we move on, and you know, hopefully it can be as financially responsible as possible. That's all I wanted to say. Your report?
All right. Just to get started here, a few things going on this week. On Friday evening, our community, the Hope for Hardy group will have the Twilight Festival here at Centennial Park and in this block area, with a concert and prize drawing on Friday evening. So we want to extend a thank you to our staff that are all involved in the planning and the efforts that go on behind the doors in anticipation of these, because our public safety and trying to ensure that attendees have the best time possible, but in the safest way. That's our outcome here, our desired goal. And so that will be Friday night, and Saturday morning, the city will have a 5K with the canal race, on the canal trail, a 5K that will be Saturday. Check-in will begin at 8 o'clock in the morning, and the race will start at 10 o'clock AM. So 5K is about 3.1, 3.2 miles, so we encourage all who are willing and able to attend, you don't have to run the whole thing, you can walk and run, or just go out and support others who are there. And then just as a reminder, that the Battle of the Badges Blood Drive will be on October the 1st, from 12 until 6, which is the next day, or we'll meet that day as well for our next council meeting. So 12 to 6 at Kirkwood, you can register in advance if you're interested in donating blood, and you can do that through the Red Cross site, they'll just kind of make it a little bit faster if you register ahead of time. The city has, we've mentioned this several times, but is really embarking on, or the MAPS Group is a company, a vendor that the city has contracted with to conduct a position classification study for the city, and so those meetings are gonna start here very soon. The kickoff will begin next week with orientation meetings with our staff, and the consultants will interview and ask employees to complete a questionnaire about the work that they do, and to ensure that the positions are within the appropriate grades, and pay for their place on the salary schedule, and then their exemption status or not. And so that will begin with those meetings, and there's more about that information in your report behind the human resources page, about what the classification study does and the process as well. Tag on to human resources and the activities there. In light of Chief Guyan's upcoming December 1 retirement, the city has contracted with developmental associates to conduct a recruitment and assessment selection process for the position of police chief, and as part of that, we would like to have some public input, stakeholder input into the police chief selection recruitment process, and as part of that, want to know what does the community want from its next police chief? And so there is gone, it is live now, a survey is on there to provide feedback in the chief of police selection process. Just a few questions, open-ended, where you can respond to that, and we ask for citizens to complete that before September the 25th, so just about a week to get that done. And so that has been posted to our social media sites as of this afternoon, as well as distributed through a press release, and so the link will be available through there. But we do invite the citizens to respond and to provide information on what they would like to see as far as activities, and what they would like to see in our next police chief, and the things that are important to our community in the policing and in that leadership of the department. Subject to your questions, that concludes my report for this evening.
Our seats was around 797,000. Our total expenditures is 3.9 million, but that's normal. We are just starting to get our first allotments. We got our first allotment of sales tax, and we got our first allotment of utility franchise tax, and we normally get a big allotment of our property tax in September. So I don't want you to be alarmed about that. We pay a lot of upfront, you know, once annual, once a year, annual type invoices in, you know, July, so. So we did receive a little bit of avalerum, we received some residential sideways, commercial sideways, and some grants and donations. Of course, our interest revenue is still very good right now, so. Does anybody have any questions?
Questions for the finance director? All right, thank you, ma'am. Any other business that needs to come before us this evening? I was talking to a friend of mine today in Southport, and he told me he got 18 inches of rain. So if you don't think you got something to be thankful for, just think about those people. They got a bad situation, but he said they had not had any loss of life, so that's something for them to be thankful for. A motion to adjourn? Motion by Mr. Stainback, second to his motion. Second by Mr. Bell, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
If there's no, adjourn. 30 minutes. Hey, figure out how much